Are we ready? Good evening. Today is Wednesday, September 20th, 2023. This is the Monroe Township Board of Education meeting. Call the meeting to order if everybody would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Allen, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez. Ms. Belko.
Here.
Ms. Bora.
Here.
Ms. DePaine. Ms. Fabiano. Ms. Ratner. Ms. Scott.
Here.
Ms. Kirby.
Here.
Mr. Tufano.
Here.
We do not have a quorum.
What?
Okay, I'm going to ask our IT gentlemen, do we have anybody online that looks to be a Board of Education member? That had a remote link given to them? No? Okay. All right, unfortunately, we do not have a quorum this evening. So what does that mean? According to NJSA 18A:10-6, as well as our Board Policy 0163, states that the Board must meet at least every two months during the period in which schools are in session. A board meeting must start no later than 8:00 p.m., but if no quorum is present, there can be a recess until 9:00 p.m. of the same day. So at this time, we are going to recess in hopes that one of our Board members who are not present either shows up in person or remotely. We do have many items on tonight's agenda, including a bus driver to be hired, as well as many other personnel issues. As you know, we do have a driver shortage here in our district. The state is suffering from that. So this new driver would absolutely help with the issues that we are having in our district. So I'm hopeful that one of our Board members will either log on with the remote link that they were provided or come in person. We also have students' trips and competitions on the agenda, as well as our bill list to pay the bills of the district that needs approval. So again, I'm hoping that one of our Board members shows up between now and 8:00 p.m. to establish a quorum where the Board can conduct business. I will come back out around 7:15 when our closed session is normally concluded and update you if we have a quorum. Mr. Gagliardi, our Board Attorney, is on his way here and should be here before 8:00 p.m. However, he's available by phone to us to consult with him while he's in transit here. Thank you.
Is it proper for us to notify the public of what's going on?
You know what? When we come back out, when we come back from our recess, we'll see if we have a quorum or not. And then we can, I will update the public on what is taking place.
Thank you.
You're welcome. As we stated before we took our recess, unfortunately, we do not have a quorum here this evening. Ms. DePaine, Ms. Fabiano, Ms. Alvarez, and Ms. Ratner have failed to join our meeting this evening in person and remote. And I know I read this at the beginning, but nobody was here in the public, and I know we were having an issue with our link online. So I'd just like to read this again. NJSA 18A:10-6, as well as the Monroe Township Board Policy 0163, states that a Board must meet at least once every two months during the period in which schools are in session. A board meeting must start no later than 8:00 p.m., but if a quorum, if no quorum is present, there must be a recess. It can be until 9:00 p.m. of the same day. So we did take a recess. Ms. Allen did contact, attempted to reach each of the Board member not present. And unfortunately, none of the four Board members picked up the phone or indicated that they would be able to attend remotely this evening. So unfortunately, we will not be able to hold the meeting this evening because we're unable to reach a quorum. On behalf of the Board, I want to apologize to everybody who took their time out tonight to come here or watch remotely. We are elected officials, and we take an oath to come to these meetings to conduct the business of the Board that the voters put us here to do. The administration was so happy, I know, to have a new bus driver on the agenda tonight to approve. Sadly, that cannot happen. We have many personnel items on the agenda tonight that cannot be, that cannot be approved because we are not allowed to conduct any Board business. Some of those items on our personnel agenda were all winter sports coaches, advisors for the French Honor Society, Science National Honor Society, the Percussion Symphony, choral support, and the Technology Club. We have on the agenda to approve that we're not going to be able to this evening, 11 paraprofessionals for after-school Unified Clubs and Athletics at the high school, 15 staff members for after-school substitute teacher coverage at the high school, three teachers for the writing lab at the high school, 11 new Title I staff, including freshman math intervention, freshman ELA intervention, and specialists. We have on the agenda to approve a security officer, 14 substitute teachers. We also have many Board action items that will not be able to improve, to be approved tonight, including professional development for our staff, student teachers, and affecting hundreds of our students is busing for various trips, including the band competition at MetLife Stadium and at South Brunswick High School, the key club trip to Six Flags, the entrepreneurial class trip to the University of Delaware, the avid trip to Monmouth University, and the MAPS trip to Happy Day Forum. Again, we are elected officials that have an obligation to come to these meetings once a month and conduct the business of the Board. It's really unfortunate that my colleagues on the Board have chosen not to show up tonight for whatever reasons they have given us. I know one is on vacation, and you know, she, she told me after, after we unanimously approved having the meeting on September 20th back at our August meeting, the members here, that were here at August, unanimously approved to have the meeting on September. I got a phone call shortly after, a few days after the meeting, asking me to change it because Ms. DePaine's air flight got changed, and she's coming home tomorrow rather than today. And she asked if I could move the meeting to tomorrow night. And I, I told her I would check. I called Mrs. Chanley. I looked into it with the administration, and unfortunately, tomorrow night is the high school's back-to-school night. And I was told it would not be possible to have Board of Education meeting tomorrow night. So with that, I wasn't contacted until Thursday night by Ms. Alvarez, who told me she would not come to the meeting. She didn't offer me a reason why. And then on Friday, Ms. Fabiano emailed me after the agenda was already completed and put up on Board docs that she was having an emergency medical procedure today, that could only be today. And Ms. Ratner told me that she is going to be at her religious institution this evening with her child. And she wasn't sure when she was going to get here, if at all. So you know, we have until 8:00 to start the meeting. I'm not sure if she is going to make it or not, but the last communication I had with her was she did not know what time she would be able to get here, if she would at all. All four Board members were given a remote link and made aware of what was on the agenda, what would not be able to be approved. And I know myself and some of my colleagues on the Board reached out and tried to convince our colleagues to show up either remotely or in person this evening because it's unfortunate that the business of the district and the Board cannot be, cannot be done tonight. Although we can't take any action this evening, I wanted to ask Mrs. Chanley if you have anything that you want to raise with the Board? If you want to ask them if any, anything that is of great importance, that we need to, any issues that you may have with us not conducting business?
The only thing that I would need to do is I would need to reach out to cancel tomorrow, have a conversation with, to get a legal opinion about what, if anything, can be done for any of the items on the agenda, whether it be under my superintendent's personnel report or Board action. If anything can be done, first and foremost, I will, I will let the attorneys know that if anything can be done, my answer would be yes, I want to do it for the kids. So anything that affects the children, I know that transportation, Mr. Barrandica, who happens to be here in the audience, sent out an email to all the parents, letting them know our situation with transportation. We're even having conversations to see if we could move around the after-school activities to lighten the load, even on Thursdays is a big day. All these things have been in conversations that were happening, and the members were present at the committee meetings when these things were discussed. So all I can say is that I will put a phone call in to Mr. Gagliardi or one of his colleagues, because I do deal with about two or three of them, to ask them if they can give me some time to go through the agenda, to see what is legally appropriate and possible under the purview of a superintendent without Board approval. At this juncture, I would assume nothing, but assuming could be wrong. I just always assume that anything that's put on a Board document to be approved means it requires approval. That is why we do the things we do. However, if there is any area where he feels that it is appropriate and legal where a superintendent can't take action and it benefits the kids, that will be the conversation that I'd have tomorrow. But I wouldn't be able to share or even question the Board about that tonight.
Okay. And I know we, as a Board, can't vote on anything or take any action. But did anybody have any questions for Mrs. Chanley on any agenda items? Any concerns of anything on the agenda? No? Okay. All right. Also, as a Board, we have a vacant position that we were anticipating voting on this evening. We have applicants that the Board wish to interview here this evening that cannot take place. Unless the Board can decide on a special meeting between now and the next scheduled Board meeting, we will not be able to meet the deadline of October 13th to appoint someone to a vacancy. At such time, the county superintendent will be the one who would be charged with filling the vacancy.
Although we can't conduct business tonight, I also would like to let the public know some good news, however. We did get a notification, and I know we spoke about it at our committee meetings this week. The state has approved the ROD grant that the district applied for and was awarded grant money for approximately $4 million for fixing Applegarth School. In order to accept it, the district needs to come up with the rest of the money, approximately 60% of the project, which would be $5 million. The administration met last week with township officials to discuss possibly getting some help with, from the town through a shared services agreement to provide financial support to fix Applegarth School. I know the meeting went very well, was very well received. I have a meeting scheduled tomorrow with Mayor Delina to talk through what a shared services agreement might look like. And I will let my colleagues on the Board and the administration know how that goes. I'll put that in my Friday confidential report. Just want to say, this is the first time in over a decade that the district is actually getting close to being able to fix Applegarth School the way it should be. And I want to thank the administration, Mr. Tagg, and everybody who has had a part in really pushing through the ROD grants and, and our township official meetings to really get this, you know, moving along in the direction that we need for the town and for the students. Additionally, we met with the township clerk, myself, Mrs. Chanley, Dr. Lehman, Ms. Allen, with the Board, the Township Attorney, the Township Clerk, and officials from the Department of Elections. We have begun talks to advocate for stop using our schools for elections. Although it's a long process, they told us, it takes a lot of work to do. I am hopeful that we will be able to come up with some type of a solution other than having our elections in our schools because it poses a real security issue for our students and our staff. So at this time, our next scheduled Board of Education meeting is Wednesday, October 18th at 6:30 p.m. I'd like to ask my Board members that are here if they have anything they would like to say before we adjourn. Mr. Tufano?
I think your explanation of what's going on here is painted very nicely. But I would, as a Board member, appreciate it if you would read the threatening emails you received as Board President if certain things weren't done the way other Board members would like them done, because that's the real reason why they're not here. So this is an Oprah email, and I think the public, all the people in this audience, especially the people who wanted to fill the empty seat, deserve to hear why they wasted their time tonight. I would like the district to understand, parents, students, to understand exactly what went on here tonight and how it affected them and how people are not doing the right thing for them. So I would love for you to read the email sent to you by Ms. Alvarez so that people in the audience could get a clearer picture about what's going on. Is that possible?
There's too many of the emails.
There is one particular email where threats were sent to you that this would happen if they didn't get their way. And that is what this is about. I understand that you're trying to be nice. I'm not a nice person. So I'll read the email if you'd like, but I would prefer you did it as the Board President because there are a lot of people here that wasted their evening, and there are a lot of students that are going to be suffering because of personal vendettas against you and Mrs. Chanley. That's what this is about. And that is not what being a Board member should be about. Nobody knows that better than me. I was censured illegally on this Board. I was, I watched as they set up a candidate for this position that we're going to interview tonight. I watched the Jamesburg, Jamesburg Rep illegally, from now, from my knowledge now, because our Board President back then didn't tell me.
Prior rep.
Prior rep. I'm sorry. The prior rep voted on, not only did he vote on, but he nominated the candidate to fill the empty seat. And here we have people upset that our current and lovely Jamesburg Rep cannot vote or shouldn't vote. Now, I don't know how everybody else feels about that, but we also had a group of people in this town who attacked this Board falsely, accusing us of hating the Jamesburg children, hating the Jamesburg people, not wanting to cooperate with the Jamesburg population. Now, we would love for the Jamesburg Rep to be able to vote for someone who's going to represent a lot of her children in this district. And we have a group, and I don't know who is on the group, but we have a certain group that I know of who is so against it, they decided to shut down the district today. So again, I would request, if I have to make a motion, I will, that you read, I don't know if I can make a motion, we don't have a quorum. So I would like to request again officially that you read that email to the public. And if you can't, I would definitely recommend that you Oprah that document, that email, because the public needs to know. Enough.
And Mr. Tufano, I appreciate all of that. And while I would have no problem reading it, I think that if anybody would like to see that, I think the proper way is through Oprah because I would be, I would not want to read something that could be seen as being confidential Board information and then have some sort of ethics charge written up about me that I shared some.
Emails are wrong to Oprahs, they're not confidential.
They are, they are, but they, they can be, they are redacted at times with certain Board confidential information. So I would just want to err on the side of caution because this district has seen a crazy influx of ethics cases by certain members.
Failed.
Failed, yes, that were dismissed. But I would not want to bring on any more legal issues for the district.
Ms. Kirby, can I correct something here just real quick?
Sure.
I just want, there should be no misunderstanding here based on what Mr. Tufano just shared. This Board was going to follow policy, and Ms. Scott was not going to vote on this position. That was already decided, there was no debates about it. Ms. Scott was not going to vote despite the fact that the legal opinions on both districts are different. But we were going to follow our own policy, our own legal advice, and Ms. Scott was not going to vote on the decision of who's going to be the next, the 10th Board member. So I just wanted to clarify that, that people should not take that as we, it was a fight about whether or not Ms. Scott would vote. That was not what was happening.
And it was, there was other parts of why, besides that.
Yes, absolutely.
Also, the request for a special meeting to be held when it was agreed upon to have the meeting this date and not hold a special meeting.
Yes, and that was something that the public should know too, is that we, as a Board, had decided that we would not hold a special meeting to select a candidate for the vacant spot, that we would do it during a regularly scheduled Board meeting. And then somewhere along the way, it became threats that if I did not hold a special meeting to have the vacancy interviews that evening with a vote, that they, that there was a team that potentially would not show up. And that was, Ms. Alvarez called me on the phone late August, and she said that to me. She said, "If you don't do this and we don't have a special meeting, you know, there, you won't be able to have them because you won't be able to reach a quorum." And I said, "Well, is that a threat? Are you telling me you're not coming?" And I said, "And if you're, if you're planning on not coming, is that what I'm hearing is that you're not coming? You need to let me know, you have to give me notice if you're not coming." And she said, "That's not what I said." I said, "Well, I would respectfully ask that in the next 48 hours, you tell me." And then I did email the entire Board, and I relayed the conversation that we had, stating that I was threatened, that if we did not hold a special meeting, that we would not be able to have a quorum on September 20th. And I asked any Board member at that time, late August, if they had any issues coming on September 20th to let me know immediately. And nobody did. Last week, we had committee meetings. All of our Board members came, they attended their respective committees. They spoke about what they would bring forth to the full Board for approval. There was no indication to me or our Board Secretary that anybody other than Ms. DePaine was not going to be at the meeting. I do have a responsibility to the district and to the Board and to the administration to let them know when we are in, if we're not going to have a quorum. There is a procedure to cancel a meeting. However, again, like I said, it's 7:52. I let Ms. Ratner know she had till 8:00 to get here. I've never got any confirmation from Ms. Ratner that she absolutely was not coming. So that is why the meeting was not canceled. Because had I canceled it today saying we were not going to have a quorum, and Ms. Ratner did show up before 8:00, I would be in violation of, of the law because I would be saying we didn't have a quorum. She could show up and say, "Well, I am here. I told you I might come, and I got here before 8:00. So why did you cancel the meeting? We would have had a quorum." So it was, it was like a catch-22 of, well, what do I do? I couldn't get a definitive answer of whether or not she was coming. She said she would try. Again, I gave the four Board members the link, and they had the opportunity to participate either remotely or in person. Ms. Scott?
I just want to read something. Make a few comments. When I was sworn into this role as a Jamesburg Rep, I came to the seat with some preconceived perceptions of the members I would have to work with and a lot of rumors and judgments that had been spewed all over the social media. I decided to come in with an open mind and maturity for the best interests of not only the children and citizens of Jamesburg, but for those in Monroe as well. I'm happy that I took that stance and level of ethical and professional dignity. That said, I would like to make a few comments on the level of ethics and maturity from some of my fellow Board members. Ms. DePaine and Ms. Alvarez have made it quite clear from the day they were sworn in that they came to this Board with chips on their shoulders and unwilling attitude to come in with an open mindset and effort to work together for the benefit of the children and members of our communities. Together, they have decided to band together as one team, and I'm using the words taken directly from use by Ms. Alvarez against the rest. I had hoped that as these members filled their seats, they would grow and learn to work as a more cohesive unit. Unfortunately, that has not transpired, as you can see by tonight's lack of a quorum, which hasn't, which was an intentional play because this team did not get their way. Due to Ms. DePaine's travel plans, we were given such excuses as airlines canceling flights for a day later, a month in advance, something I have never heard of happening, emergencies five days in advance, and just not even giving a reason, just that they would not attend and gave more than 48 hours of notice. This was intentional, so there would not be a quorum to interview candidates to fill this vacancy. This was a play made, this, this is a play that's made by Congress that often angers us as taxpayers. I would think that we would be above that, but apparently, certain ones are not. Or maybe these are how things went down in North Brunswick, where Ms. DePaine often loves to reference her many years of tenure on that Board. These are certainly not the way that we do things in Jamesburg, at least not in, not for my seven years that I've served, and I state that proudly. On my Board in my little town, we often do not see eye to eye on many matters, but ultimately, we try to work together with our, with our administration. I plead on the next person to take this vacant seat, to come in with a clear mindset, maturity, and an ethical backbone with willingness to work together as adults. We are for the best, we are here for the best interest of the children, employees, and community members of this district. Thank you.
Ms. Belko?
If I may, just one last comment. One, I wish to express my condolences or sorrow to those that showed up here tonight to be interviewed and showing an interest into this Board. I would go home and think about that a second time. That's, that's my first advice. My next advice is, I did tell you, you would get a lesson here when we sat down earlier today. And this is a lesson I'm sorry that you have to see at such a young age because Board meetings are a place where you can see the workings of a good Board and what we can do. Unfortunately, because people didn't get their way, they decided not to come tonight. And, and that is clear from, you know, the statements that were made here by other Board members. And at risk of risking any ethical charges against any of us, we want to err on the side of caution and not share anything. But again, as Mr. Tufano said, those emails are Oprah-able, and they'll be reviewed to make sure that we don't send out information that needs to be redacted. I am very disappointed in my colleagues on this Board who have sat across from me for the last year and a half stating how they really want to work together and how they want to be a cohesive Board and how they want to try and work together. And this clearly is not what they want to do. They clearly want to grandstand, and they want to make a statement. I have been on this Board for little, almost three years now, and I will continue until April because I was elected by you. 9,000 people in this town elected me to come and sit here to represent the Township and to answer to the State of New Jersey and make sure that this district is run appropriately and the money is spent appropriately, and that things are done appropriately, and that we follow things to the letter of the law. And we reach out to our council all the time to make sure that we are doing things correctly. And it's been my pleasure to serve. I've been frustrated at times, I've been angry at times, but damn it, I've showed up every single time there's been a meeting. And I can tell you, in the first year and a half that I was here, we had more special meetings than I care to shake a stick at. And I'm really angry that our fellow Board members, who you also elected, have decided to treat you and your children and your teachers and your administrators in this manner with such disdain and disrespect. Thank you.
Okay, I know Mr. Gagliardi just arrived a few minutes ago, so thank you. As Ms. Belko said, we did engage our council, many emails and information and advice on everything from the, our Jamesburg Rep and the voting and the statute to the quorum issues. So I want to thank you for all of, you know, your help in this. I don't know if you want to say anything as far as, you know, what is taking place this evening with the lack of the quorum and, and what the state statute is?
Unless the Board has any questions, I'm not going to drone on with the legalese that you and I have been mired in for the past couple of days. Certainly, you know, whether it's the Board President or the Superintendent, you're free to raise any issues of concern. By the way, we have a discussion, this is not and can't be a meeting. But you can certainly have any discussion since I know the Board doesn't know when or if it will meet before October 18th. You can't transact any business, you can't convene a meeting. But certainly, if the Superintendent wants to bring things to the attention of the Board or the Board President has any issues you want to raise relative to Board business, you are free to do that. There's no public participation tonight, there's no votes on anything. But certainly, since some of us are gathered here, you may wish to take advantage of that opportunity before excusing everyone.
Okay. Ms. Belko?
I just have a question about paying the bills. We do have quite a few bills, 6 million in bills that need to be paid. I know that there are some bills, the salaries and, you know, the teachers. But is there anything really outstanding, Ms. Allen, that we have to make sure we get paid, that we are going to need to do a leadership approval of after tonight? Because I think the public needs to.
of after tonight? Because I think the public needs to know that, you know, we have, we have to pay the people that do business with us. Otherwise, what are we, you know, we're going to have, you know, I'm not thinking the lights are going to get shut off. However, there's other things that happen that, you know, we have to, we have to conduct business on.
To the, to your point, Mr. Gadliardi, we do approve a resolution about need and the BA being able to.
Yes.
Can we apply that to the entire bill list this year, this meeting?
I don't know that it should be applied to the entire bill list. I don't know what's on it. I mean, certainly, we talked about the way that provision has been used and misused in the past. Naturally, payroll would be on that list, right? There may be other bills with deadlines that would expire prior to October 18. So, those are the sort of things we're talking about. And I imagine you can sort of break the bill list in two and submit that. The one other thing that I recall doing to remedy some practices of the past, was that whether it's, I don't know whether it's the board president, or the finance committee or something, but some, right. So, board members will be made aware of what you do before you do it. But I do think, in response to the question, that this is the sort of occasion that you'd have to take advantage of that, right? No, no contractors, certainly no employees, no outside entity with a deadline for payment of the bill lest the board be penalized, or somehow jeopardize its services. None of that should occur, because there's no action taken tonight. And so, I'll leave that to the board secretary to submit that with the new and improved process we put in place.
So, all of those checks would need to be voided? Because you've, those numbers are already there, right?
There.
So, they would all need to be, can we reuse?
I don't think they would need to be voided.
I think we should leave the process up to the board administrator and the board secretary.
If you go through that process, you wouldn't need to void the checks. There are some you'd have to sit on until there's a vote, but there are others that I think, again, in terms of the exigency of the circumstances, you can go through the process that the board approved, get those bills paid.
So, I would ask Ms. Allen and Ms. Chanley if you would go through that process, and then let myself, Gazala, and Mrs. Belcom know that. That has been our processes, the board VP and the finance chair. When Karen was in the seat, she happened to be the same, both. So, but now we have three board members that are looking at it as well. Mr. Tofano?
I have one question for Vito. As you know, we have a major bus shortage, and we've finally reeled in somebody with the CDL needed to drive our kids around. And now, today, we can't approve the hiring of them. Is there any kind of emergency statute that we can implement to have this approved through the superintendent, or do we have to have a quorum to hire the employee?
The short answer is, you need to have a quorum to hire the employee.
Great. Wonderful.
And just as a discussion, I've been having this conversation with Mrs. Chanley, Dr. Lehman, and you as well, Chrissy, about, there is marching band competition trips. The first one is on 29th of September, and that was up for approval tonight. And I feel like, like, all athletics get their transportation. And I know we've been going back and forth. Marching band, when they travel with the, with the football team, that doesn't come to us in the agenda for approval. But when they're going for competitions, it comes to us for approval. With this situation today, we don't know what's going to happen. And I feel like, you know, this needs to be reconsidered, because it seems to be not, I don't know if it's legally needed to be done that way. The conversation just falls into a funnel of field trips, and that's why. But if it's, if it's getting helped, it's not an additional cost that we are approving or disapproving when we vote on it. So, I feel we need to, as a board, revisit this in, and if there's, if it's legally possible, if it doesn't break any statutes, marching band should be able to go to competition that they every year go to, without having to wait on board approval.
Yeah. And I know Mrs. Chanley had conversations with one of the attorneys, and I think also with the insurance company, because there's liability issues. And I think there was going, I think we were hopeful that we were going to have a meeting this evening. Honestly, I was. But I think that further conversation has to take place, to find out exactly what the trip is, because there's, there's a list of field trips. And while we may say there's no cost, the cost is the buses. And we do have to look at if that's something that we would not need to approve as a board. We have to see where it fell in the agenda, in the budget. You know, we just have to make sure, because there are, there may be, like you said, we have to go back through and look at everything, line item by line item, because we know for a long time, there were things that we didn't need to approve on the agenda, that were on the agenda. And then there were things that we needed to approve that we weren't approving. So, I think this is going to be a very good task and learning experience for myself and, and the administration of what exactly, you know, line by line in the agenda, what can we possibly move forward with, and what we can't. And, you know, we have to side on the error of caution, and we have to ensure that what does need a board approval, that we do. Because God forbid, something happens, and the board didn't approve it, you know, the liability, there's a liability then. And then it's, well, then who gave the authorization? Well, then that person is going to take on the liability, not the district. So, you know, there's, there's a lot, I think, to be considered from, from a legal. So, I'm, I'm with you, Gazala. I do not want to see any students negatively impacted. You know, again, like Katie said, you know, we, we've taken an oath, and we come here, and I know that we all do our very best to get here. I ask our board members all the time if there's any issues with any of the dates. We have changed dates occasionally, and I, when a date request has been made to the board, I've made sure that we're going to have a quorum. There were times where I thought we were going to not have a quorum, because there were multiple board members that told me they, they were going to have conflicts. We changed that meeting, I think it was back in the spring. So, I have been very proactive when I thought we weren't going to have a quorum. And, you know, to Mr. Tofano's point, we did change the August meeting, and he was on vacation. And the first thing that Mr. Tofano said was, "If this is what's in the best interest of the district to have the meeting on this date, I'm absolutely fine with it. If you need me to participate remote, I will go find a location where I can get reception," because he was in the woods or in the Catskills, where he got no reception. "And I will make sure that I can log on to the meeting, because I do not want to not have a quorum, or hold up the business of the board. Even though you're changing the meeting, I know my responsibility as a board member." So, you know, I know a lot of us take it very seriously, and I am very disappointed this evening. Like I said, I know even this afternoon, I was very hopeful. We were having a meeting. We all prepared for it. We came here ready to do the business of the board. Does anybody have anything else? Yes. Hetfield, our student board member, welcome. And I'm very sorry this evening.
Yes. So, all I wanted to say is, I know that this is a really complex matter, and I don't want to intervene too much. But all I wanted to say is, just from the student perspective, I know we brought up the marching band trips, and all the field trips that were canceled. And I have a lot of friends on marching band, and they practice so much every day after school. And our marching band is outstanding. We are outstanding at competitions, and they do so well, that it's really not fair to the students who have worked so hard, that they aren't able to go on these trips. And I know that would be very disappointing for them. And I know that there's so many legalities involved in this. But I just wanted to raise awareness to the students that are really impacted by this. And the Key Club trip to Six Flags, I'm an officer for Key Club on the state level. And I know it just sounds like a fun trip to Six Flags, but it's something that we've been planning for months. And it's not just a trip, it's a service event. And we're hosting a book drive for disadvantaged youth that we won't be able to participate in if the school doesn't go. And it's been a tradition for Monroe to go for many years. And we have a very active and outstanding Key Club as well, that has a really large presence on the state level. So, I just wanted to share my thoughts that, from the student perspective, it's really disappointing, and it's going to impact a lot of students.
Thank you.
Great job.
I'm very sorry.
That doesn't break your heart.
Does anybody have anything else? All right. At this time, I will, we're not allowed to have public forum, because it's not, it's not, we're not allowed to conduct a meeting. So, at this time, we will adjourn, adjourn. Thank you.